Transit presentation for the police department. Does anybody have any issues with adjustment? So that's what we will do. So um, we'll go ahead and talk about the consent agenda. So if our town clerk will please read those items.
Only the letter A, which is the town council meeting minutes. May twenty third, twenty two work session meeting, June fourteenth, twenty twenty two regular meeting. July twelfth, twenty twenty two regular meeting and July twenty fifth work session meeting.
Thank you. And just so everyone is aware, we are approving these minutes. Because our wonderful town clerk was on a medical leave and had some issues. So we are getting caught back up on those. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Make a motion.
Do I have a second? All in favor say aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Alright, so we are going to go ahead and turn it over to Chief Kelly Blackwalder. To provide some introductions to some new members of the police department.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate y'all making this last minute adjustment. Um, one of our new hires, um Edgar, if you'll come up. He's been with us for a couple of months now. So this has been a long time coming and I I wanted to do this before I forgot. But uh, for those of you who don't know, uh, this is Edgar, uh, one of those are Campo. Um, he comes to us from Tyler City. He spent nearly a year there. And uh, came highly recommended. He worked with uh, one of our officers that are currently here now Tyson Poe. They worked together. So they were doing a little recruiting on the side, I guess, um, out of county. So we welcomed him, I don't know. A month or two ago. He's joined by McKenzie here, his soon to be fiancee, I hope so. We we were delighted to get this young man. He's in full training. Um, we're hoping he'll get out in the next little bit. Everything's been going really smoothly. He is, he is operating like a pro. We we really are lucky to have him. And I just wanted to introduce him and you guys get an opportunity to welcome him aboard.
Thankful for the opportunity to serve all, um, in the town of Elon.
And uh, last but not least, this has been an ongoing process. Um, thank, please come up. Shane James is our new uh, school resource officer for Elon Elementary School. He comes to us with about eight years of experience. From Randolph Sheriff's Office, uh, where he spent the last three or four years as an SRO there in various capacities. So um, we're really excited. He also has a twin brother who's in law enforcement, not to be, uh, where does he work?
Ashwell City.
Alright, uh, and I saw the picture when he actually got, he took his oath and you guys really be favor. But we are excited to welcome him. Um, he is a, he is a, I think he is going to be a real prize. He's already got to meet our, our. Our esteemed principal and they're, they're making their way through it. Um, he's doing a accelerated field training. So we've not had to do this. So we have got Sergeant uh, Lovett at the school system, like going to class or going to his office and helping him work our RMS. And things like that. Over the summer, he'll come out and do a traditional field training program like Edgar's in uh, currently. So that if he ever has to come back out in the summers, he can plug in to help uh, help fill in the gap of patrol. Hopefully we don't have to do that too often. But anyway, welcome Shane James. We're, we're really pleased.
Say one thing, in this competitive market right now, you have brought us the amazing people through the town of Elon. And I'm just so, I'm sure the rest of the board feels so thankful and grateful that you all. That it really is um, a tremendous amount of service that you're doing for our town. So thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. And you guys are a selling point and you guys, uh, I, I, I do. That, that is part of my spiel that we have a really great town manager and board that supports us. So you're part of the process. Thank you.
You. I thought that there was a question. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't anything that. Okay, um, alright, so moving along, we did move up the um, old business. So letter A, major development plan review, East Neighborhood Commons Residence Hall. And I believe Lori is gonna update it.
Uh, mayor members of the board, I do not have any updates since the last meeting. Um, if you have any questions of me, I'd be happy to answer them at this time. And Brad is here as well. If you have any questions for him.
Any questions from the board?
We did have one. I know we brought up parking earlier and I, and I remember that there was enough parking spaces. Um, the number that we found it, I just wanted to make sure that they were within a distance that was safe for the students to be able to access them. Since it is right where they're, they're living. So that's the only thing I just wanted to, I think you probably clarified that Brad. But I just wanted to double check. They're not any further distance than they were before as far as coming home at night or things like that.
This building is, is, is going to be built on a current program that maybe has forty spaces. There's an existing lot to the south and then another lot to the north, where the majority of students are already parking anyway. So they'll continue to park in those locations.
It's the mom and me wanting to make sure everybody gets home safe. Okay, thank you so much.
One thing I, like I mentioned last week was the sidewalks as they exist today. But I start, started thinking about some other things, um, the lighting along the sidewalks. There'll be more pedestrians, traffic. And as you mentioned last time, I think the number of crosswalks. Um, the crosswalks, because I was going by the other day just to get a feel for that. You know, at the intersection, there's that crosswalk that exists there today. Um, and you go further over where the driveway is. So um, I'd like to make sure that we work hand in hand with the town and safety. And obviously your, your team as well to make sure we, we avoid creating some crossovers that are going problematic. As people come flying around the corner, um, today, they don't always look at pedestrians. And uh, in nighttime, it's going to be much more of a challenge. And so I hope that's something that's going to be incorporated in, in this construction.
It certainly will be. And I think there's some uh, existing markings on the street that go back to the previous school. That we need to work with the town on just cleaning some of that out.
Comments, questions?
And I'll add, there is a. There's a future project that I don't think is too far in the future. It will be across the street on the old uh, elementary school property. That will. Be a different, significantly larger than the storm is. So I think some of those issues along Haggard will be addressed during that process as well.
So I just have one question. So it says in here, conduct a public meeting. This does not require a public hearing. Just wanted to confirm that. And you're looking for a vote assuming?
Yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So let me ask a question. Why do we need to vote if there's no changes? What are we voting?
We are voting on the major development plan, right?
And that will be cleaned up in our new LMO, but the way the process is written currently, the attorney and I, it's, it's very convoluted. It contradicts itself. So it requires the public meeting. He's recommended a vote. There's not a public hearing, although you could allow public comment. The appeal process is quite unusual. It's, will be addressed in the LMO, but I would recommend a vote just so we could proceed.
Okay, that's why I was a little confused by why we would have to.
Interesting, the whole process, the way it's written in the code, as it is currently. But again, we will have that addressed in the new code.
Do you have a motion to approve?
Mayor, I'll make motion. We accept the proposal for the development. Comments that were interjected.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a presentation from Mary Catherine on the link transit transportation.
Okay, um, so tonight, uh, mayor and town councilwoman, I'm going to be presenting on the link transit system. For you and answer any questions. Um, next slide, please.
We got it working.
There you go. Right. So Link is the Burlington Public Transit System established in two thousand and sixteen. It consists of five routes covering Burlington, Gibsonville, Downtown Graham and Almonds County Community College. These routes run Monday through Friday from six thirty AM to eight PM. Okay, see that red dot right there? That's my laser pointer, everyone. The blue route goes from downtown Burlington all the way past the south part of Elon, up through into the center of Gibsonville. And that is the route.
Is that going up Westbrook?
Yes.
So it comes down that Park Street and then up Westbrook?
And it crosses over university and then it goes. Yeah. Um, Link Transit currently offers three options for service integration. Door to door service, uh, expanding the existing blue line to include several outbound and inbound stops in Elon. The third is creating a new route that would connect with other jurisdictions and that would include having our own bus. And it would just be a completely different color, but it would start from downtown Burlington at the hub and then go into Elon. Um, Gibsonville reportedly budgets forty thousand dollars for link transit services and has thirteen stops on the link basic blue line. Um, and during discussions with John Ando, the interim transit manager for Link, who we've been in contact with for the past couple of months. It was suggested that number two would be the most viable option, which would be expanding the blue line fixed route that already exists. If it become necessary due to increased in ridership and it was just really successful and a lot of people used it, then the town could move to option three. Which is creating a new link route and piling with its own bus and um, infrastructure. Link also provides supplemental fun uh, fundings, assess findings. It means fundings through state grants to help us pay for it. Um, so a survey was put out on the town's website from January to late March of two thousand and twenty-two, which resulted in a hundred and seven responses. The intention of the survey was to record the interest and opinions of community members on the link transit. Can't help everything. It's sensitive over here. It's okay. Stop with it all Diane. Car ownership willingness to use a safe and reliable bus service if it's offered. And factors that would encourage or influence ridership were included in the questions. Um, out of the one hundred and seven responses, ninety-five point two five reported that they own their own vehicle. Um, forty out of forty point four percent of responses reported that they would occasionally use the bus service to accomplish daily tasks. If it was safe and reliable. Thirty-six point seven said they would not use it at all. And twenty-two point nine reported that they would use the service regularly. Sorry, I turned to so small. I think the wrong car points. Um, the four main reasons for not wanting to use the bus service. Um, the four main reasons for not wanting to use the bus service included using their own car for its convenience. The bus route not accommodating their desired destinations and schedules and preferring to walk or bike to desired destinations. Is that good? Um, so on, that was for the left diagram, which was the reasons why they wouldn't want to use it. And then the right diagram, the top three factors would encourage them or influence bus use. Were reduced personal ability to drive, rise in fuel prices and link providing a more frequent and reliable transportation option. And if you'd like more details for these, I can provide you with them. I just wanted to give you a basic overview of what the chart and the answers were.
So they were a lot, those were free response?
Yes.
Okay, and then you like combine similar, okay?
And so I gave a couple of options, but then there, but then there was uh, space for them to put in their own thing as well.
I did have a question. Maybe we've done this way, done it yet, but is there an overlay, overlay map that shows? Think transit blue line and the other lines, as well as what I call the bio diesel. Bus route with Elon Express Route. Oh, what, what kind of overlaps are there? I know there was discussion about that he shared maybe one or two common stops, but.
So right now, Biobus, I was, I've talked to Tom Quin about this and right now Biobus doesn't share any stops with. Only transit it over, overlaps in route and destinations. Um, so target like, for instance, the, the target shopping center university, that's a destination for the, for the bus that the university uses. And it's also destination, it's a stop on link transit. And so they could overlap. Um, but they just, we haven't had transportation in Elon for the Biobus to.
So as I understand it, the Elon Express Bus is available to the community as well.
It is.
But the drop offs and pick off points in the town of Elon, or where are they located? I'm just looking up their routes right now. Um, off campus, they have a stop Elon Community Church. They list a stop at the Med Deli. Arts West, out Haggard. So the, I think those are college station. So I think those are the ones that are off campus, if you will. That's their Haggard Avenue route. They have a Danley Center tram, which is all with on campus. And then they have a university drive line, which goes to the Mosley Center, Lowe's Food, Argent, Texas Roadhouse, Coles and Millards. So those are all into Burlington stops.
And the timeline also isn't exactly conducive for like a working professional. So the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday schedule for the university drive line is four PM to ten PM on Wednesday, Thursday. Four PM to twelve AM Friday, twelve PM to twelve AM Saturday and twelve PM to ten PM Sunday. So not something that, you know, someone who works in the town of Elon and wants to. Or let's say they live in Elon, they work at Target, they, they can't access work on the bus. Unless they work after four PM.
And then they'd have to find another route home if they worked a second shift job. And, and we have talked to the university about the idea of. Linking, if you will, with the link systems on, on a, you know. Adjusting schedules perhaps or looking at schedules so they could make a drop off ten minutes before the link stop. So that people could connect into that system. That doesn't exist today. I think it is something that is. Universe has expressed at least an interest in looking at the possibilities of that. If something that could work.
I have a statement from Tom.
Yeah, before you ask that, um, Angela, so you said there are five routes on link transit. And I assume there's a crossover. So if someone needed to get to a location like on a different line. That's, that's something they could do.
Because they would have to go back to the central level and they would have to switch lines in downtown Burlington.
That's, that's the hub. That's the center of the hub.
It would have to be done at the hub because there's no other crossing. If you can go back to the route map.
Right there.
I want you to have the next one back. There we go.
Between the red and the orange, but I'm not sure that they can switch lines at that.
There Catherine is John participating?
He's on. I don't know if he's been made a participant.
He would be the one. I don't know if you've introduced him. He would be the one. It'd be great to answer these questions.
John Ando is currently attending.
I see him, okay, I see him there. But making him a participant, hold on a second. Okay, make me sweat over here. Just a minute, just a minute. I might have to do it on the main computer. That's why I was.
While you're doing that, you may be able to answer this. If not, maybe he will. You had that line door to door. What exactly does that mean? Does that mean that they would actually extend out and drop off in place that's closer to your house?
That, that's, I believe that they actually, you go to door, like people reserve it and they. It's, they, they go to the actual house. And link transit is your charge for the time spent within your city limit. And so the more stops door to door, I believe would cost more.
So Gibsonville has thirteen stops, right? And with you looking at this, I mean, what, what would be the number of stops you think? Obviously you can always increase them, but how many stops you think would really cover the majority of what? We would, it would be beneficial.
Well, I'll say the stops in Gibsonville are, are six. I guess the seventh one at the terminal and then the same six coming back.
Okay, so it's.
So seven, seven stops, one.
On this.
One inbound.
About seven or eight.
Yeah.
Different suggestions.
So that would probably be something similar to what we would, you know, if we were moving that direction, similar budget to what they've, they're proposing. Or that they've got. If we are piggybacking on that blue route. Obviously stops in Elon would add to that route length, which would. They would have to restructure their, their route. So there I would imagine we'd be looking at a couple.
He's got his hands raised and he's.
Okay.
He could speak.
Would you like to introduce him?
Yes. Um, John Ando is interim transit manager for Link. Um, can you hear us, John?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright, well, top of the evening to everybody.
So John, um, this is Stephanie Borland. I do have a question about if we have any demographics on who currently uses transit. I, I'm sure it's spread depending on where they utilize it. But is it primarily an, an older, since you can, it sounds like, order it to your actual home? Is it an older population? Is it a population with special needs? Um, or is it simply folks that, that need a ride?
Um, we're about to do an updated demographic survey. The last time we did one was in two thousand and seventeen. And it appeared that most of our ridership is lower income, transit dependent users. That are going to either college, medical appointments or working. At employment sites like at shopping centers, Walmarts, um, particularly. Um, we do have a disability population that uses the system, but they primarily use our door to door para-transit service. Where they can't ride traditional fixed route transit.
Thank you. That was very helpful.
John, this is Monty Allison. And I had a question because obviously I, I, I'm familiar with the link transit. I've seen a lot of the stops. But one thing that's always concerned me is like along Church Street, there's a stop that's on the side of the road. The only way you know that is that there's a sign there. There's no bus stop. There's no bench. There's no covered area. Uh, for, for ridership to, to see that's where a bus stop is. Is that something that link system would be responsible for? Or would each municipality, if they chose to provide what I call official bus stop, would have to do?
That's something that we will provide. Uh, we'll use federal transit administration funding to cover the cost of those shelters. Uh, we do have some um, active grants to add more shelters and we're going through the process now to place some more at. Uh, ten popular stops in the system as we speak.
So this is sort of a broad question. This is Stephanie again. Um. If we added these stops in Elon, what would we be connecting that currently we have a gap?
So can, do you mind restating your question again?
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just trying, look, I'm looking at the diagram right now and I'm just trying to figure out. I guess I'm just trying to figure out how different points are accessed. And I'm just saying, if, if we did utilize this. Are there, are, are there certain gaps that are going on right now that, that need to be filled?
Well, um, as you know, we primarily travel along Westbrook right now to get to Gibsonville. So if we just focused on that and did some minor deviations in Elon, um, to pick up residents. Um, I mean, we could do this at the, the lowest cost possible. Um, if there's additional gaps in the, in the town that needs more service, it's likely going to require the creation of a, another route. Uh, we do have transfer points in our service area, particularly in downtown Burlington. Holly Mill Mall is another one. Um, I believe the Food Lion. Um, is also another one. Basically, we allow transfers where routes meet. But for us to kind of determine how to fill those gaps, we kind of just would need to know. Um, what particularly are residents looking for in a public transit service? Did that answer your question?
Yeah, no, you, you answered it much better than I asked it. So, um, yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
So Mary Catherine, looking at this, the only way that blue line would be beneficial to us as a town would be if it were to. Traverse Highway one hundred back to the town of Elon and somehow navigate back to Church Street.
There's a, there's a lot of options. There's, I have, I've, I've made maps in the national slides of places that people want. And um, it, it shows, I've sent, I've sent them to John and, and after he looks at them and we can talk back and forth. Department and the council about where it would be best. But I think it would, my personal opinion would be that it'd be a good to go up Church Street. But that depends on what stops, um, the, like, the cost of that goodness.
So how would you get from Gibsonville to Elon?
Do you have more slides?
Yes.
Will they help answer those questions?
Well, she's got it in a magnified mode, so maybe that's part of it.
Get you back up to. Yeah, I'm safer to move.
It's still not fully.
Yes, no. Try again now. But let me move you forward down. How about that?
Right now, try Mary Catherine.
Okay. Okay. Now that we've gone through the, the reasons that they would and wouldn't and um. We also asked at the very end for suggested stops and places. And we actually got a lot of responses. We um, got, I think it was seventy-four stops. Uh, the map that was in your packet is different from this one. What was in your packet was the top, um. I think it was thirty-six percent of votes. So it was the stops that were selected. You know, fourteen, fifteen times, like Bethment Park, uh, Slade Downtown Post Office. The main, like, like the university in general was, was a really good destination. People wanted to stop. Um, these are all the stops that were voted on two or more times. So a lot of it is the main downtown area, the parks. Generally, what um, I saw was that people want to be able to get from downtown, from the parks to places like Food Lion. And they want to be able to get to Target and they want to be able to get to the Cronot Clinic. They, they just want, you know, they get the hospital if they need to, just necessities that people want to get from the center of Elon. Or down Williamson to necessities that, you know, everyday activities. Um, so like I said, inside, people suggest a lot of outside, but these are the ones that were inside Elon. Um, and yeah, the post office, the park, um, the university were the main ones that people wanted. Um, and, yeah, the post office, the park, um, the university were the main ones that people wanted. And then of outside Elon, where the Target Shopping Center, the hospital, other parks they wanted to go to as well. And then there's a lot of other ones like the yoga center.
The one up Walker Road, that's elementary school, what's the one all the way toward Glen Raven?
Uh, Dollar General.
And of course, the, uh, Trailer Park, um, that was on Manning there, I think that's why they wanted to stop there, and also Linky Hall.
Yeah, Linky Hall.
I was thinking about Trailer Park more than anything else there.
And Twin Lakes as well, I'm not sure if Twin Lakes has their own transportation system, they get people out of Twin Lakes? Um, that was, they do? Okay.
We'll have to talk to them. I think they have specialty, they do some specialty stuff, and they do some trips to grocery stores.
That's one that a lot of people wanted to. I think mainly on Church Street and, well, from Church Street up Williamson, and then to just, they know like the center of our town was where a lot of people wanted the stops to be.
I know with the door to door, um, I have a neighbor who is disabled, and where our neighborhood becomes Burlington, she uses that address, so he just walks a walk and a half. And then it actually picks him up at that house.
Wow.
Um, and that really helps him be much more independent. Just sharing, you were asking about who uses it, and I know he's a very frequent user, especially when it's really hot or really cold.
I believe, I'll double check with John, he can verify, um, that paratransit is separate from, it's, it's a separate service. The door to door is a paratransit, um, but we will be starting with the fixed routes, is that right?
That is correct, but we would also have to still provide the paratransit, because the paratransit is federally required. And the paratransit would follow a three-quarter mile radius of the route.
These were the suggested roads and intersections, so the purple dots are the intersections, and then I just highlighted the roads that, um, people suggested as well. Included Williamson Avenue, Haggard, um, Avenue and the University Drive.
And there's no route currently that takes University Drive all the way around back to Burlington, correct?
Correct.
Correct.
I think the university has bus service on University Drive, if I'm correct, if I understand?
Yes, the university does, but Link does not.
And it's looking like, just on the data on the map, that um, seems like most of the demand appears to be on, pardon if I get this wrong, is it William Net Avenue, Williamson Avenue?
Williamson.
So perhaps redirecting the blue via one hundred to Williamson Avenue to then reconnect to Church Street might be the best solution with possibly, if there's an ability to connect with the university's bus service somewhere in that vicinity of Williamson and one hundred.
There'd be a connection right there at the church and.
You could also include the, again, the Trailer Park, the Elon. Um, they're at Manning and, uh, and one hundred.
Is the, uh, stop at Brookview an existing stop on the Gibsonville route?
Brookview, let's see, so we come down Westbrook, let me check the map here. Um, no.
I was wondering if you end up doing these kind of stops, is that eliminating stops in Gibsonville?
No, it wouldn't. Our last stop in Gibsonville is Burlington Avenue and Apple Street.
So that doesn't exist on Brookview, yeah?
Okay. So basically, we just go straight from Burlington Avenue and Apple Street all the way to Westbrook Food Lion presently.
I like the route through Ball Park, that will, you know, the neighborhood and then up that road, because there's a lot of apartments and stuff there and things.
I think she was just highlighting the streets, not the route.
Yeah, I know.
Okay.
I still think that that's, would be cool.
Especially because the parks were a suggested access.
For Slade Park is, yeah.
Well, that is all from our presentation, if you have any other questions you'd like to ask me or John?
You, um, so you had a slide that talked about, oh, Gibsonville makes a, uh, certain amount of payment each year uh, to help supplement that, or, or a fee for, I don't know if it's a fee or whatever, is it based on a number of stops? Or is it based just on the idea that you're going to make a decision? Maybe, John, you can answer that question.
Yeah, so it's based on the amount.
Because you're going into Elon, or is it the number of stops you would be making?
It's really based on the amount of time that the bus spends in Elon, so, um, I think I estimated that, um, pardon, one second, let me just pull up that number here. I think I estimated the bus would be in Elon for about ten minutes. Similar to what Gibsonville, yeah, ten minutes of the route, so five minutes each way, so that'd be about thirty-two thousand a year. That's about one point five hours on weekdays and one hour on Saturdays. When you add up the number of trips that will pass through the town limits.
How, how many times does the bus go through a single stop in a day?
On weekdays, ten times, and on Saturdays, six times.
John, and looking at creating a new portion to a route, is there a, obviously, there, there's a, a period of time where people have to get used to it, start using it. Is there a guaranteed number of years that we would be signing on with? Oh, that service before we decide whether it's a success or not?
You know, we can do it on a month by month basis. Basically, all that you're paying is really the cost that we charge to our contractor to operate the transit system.
Okay.
Um, and that translates to about seventy-one dollars an hour or so.
John, sort of backing off of that, do you promote new stops, or is that something that as a town, we would need to promote out to?
We do that jointly, we'll do marketing, um, uh, system wide, and we would advertise that we have new service in Elon and encourage people to use this system to, to and from Elon. And then we would also want to rely on your ability, your town's abilities, maybe through Parks and Recreation, Town Newsletter, Town Website, et cetera. We'll participate in town events, like if you have holiday parades or um, holiday, or festivals, where we can give out bus information.
Thank you so much.
One last question, what is the present fee structure for riders right now? I know there was a while that it was free.
It's still, it still is free, we're using, um, our federal, um, CARES Act and American Rescue Plan funds to cover the cost affairs.
Okay, great, thank you.
We found that by going fare free, our ridership actually has been increasing month after month, and it eliminates that additional barrier for lower income, uh, users who may need to use that money like to buy groceries or pay rent, for instance.
How long do you anticipate it staying free?
Indefinite. Um, we were only getting sixty thousand dollars a year in fare revenue, and it was costing us close to twenty-five thousand to collect it with fare boxes and processing, so we, we figure fare free is the best approach. As long as we can cover that through federal grants, which we've been doing so.
What is the lead time to, to start a new service like this?
If we just modify the blue, it would be much quicker, and I presume we can work something out in the next few months. If it requires the creation of a new route, uh, we're going to have to purchase capital. And we, we would ask that the town pay the twenty percent match on buying that capital, because we would need an, an additional bus. Our present system doesn't have enough buses to add another route.
What's the cost of the bus that we would match the twenty percent?
Um, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And the lead time for a bus is about a year.
If we wanted to have a, as Monty, uh, described, a traditional bus stop, um, which I think could potentially help us advertise, how, how do, how do we get one? I know you said you have ten that you're putting up based on, uh, frequency stops, but if we wanted to put one in, do, do we just ask and we get it, or, or how do you go about getting one of those?
Um, you would just ask us and tell us where you'd like to put it. Um, we are, we just went out to bid for a vendor to install bus shelters. Um, so if you had a location perhaps, and if the town was willing to pour the cement pad, uh, we're happy to have that vendor just install the shelter there.
It's really that simple, we want one here, and you'll come in and put it in.
Yep, that's simple. We just added, uh, two in the town of Gibsonville last year. And they poured the cement for us, and our vendor installed it.
How big of a space do you know? Like, how much cement needs to be poured?
Um, I believe these shelters are ten feet, um, long, so about, uh, twelve feet. Twelve feet long, and they're about eight, I think, uh, six to eight feet deep. So probably ten feet deep, so we have some space around the shelter.
Thank you.
Are there questions?
I just like to make a comment, I want to commend you, I think, um, and staff for taking the effort to do this. I recall being in a meeting years ago when this first, this topic was brought with board at that time, and the decision was made by the people in the rooms, hands that were raised, were they interested in it? And unfortunately, um, that's the way that decision was, was, was made, that with very little effort and input, and I think what we saw then was, uh, I don't know people who would ride it, which is really a poor excuse for not listening to the community. And I think, even though we only have a hundred and nine, um, participants surveyed, I think it does make us aware, and as Emily shared, it doesn't matter where you live. Uh, there's people who have a need for, for transportation they can rely on, and, um, it's something we should really consider.
When will we have a, like a mockup of the route that you're thinking about, and the stops, the potential stops?
Well, I think that the point of tonight is for us to give permission for more time to be spent on this, correct? And then for there to be decisions in the future?
Um, I, I, well, I guess I'm looking, is this something you want us to pursue? Um, we don't have the money in the budget right now. You could certainly fund it if you chose to, or we could look toward next year's budget, and, you know, starting at next summer. Or sometime in the middle, if you want to do it that way. Um, we would want to work with John and, and Link to identify the, you know, what makes sense as far as the selected options, um, you know, or the record, or the, the comments that came back from the public about stops here, here, and here. We look at just that, Williamson, Haggard, two legs to tie back into Gibsonville. You know, that's probably the easiest thing to do. And, you know, we get, we get ridership that makes sense, then at some point in the future, we could look at doing something different. I think going beyond that, as John indicated, would probably necessitate a separate route in Elon. Which, there's lead in time to, to get the equipment in, in place, so. My, uh, what I understood was, yeah, Williamson, Haggard makes the most sense with the existing routes' structure. Uh, you're not going too far afield from what they're already doing.
Yeah, I saw an interview this morning with the president of Kraft Heinz, and you know, everybody's talking about the possibility of the recession continuing, getting worse. But food prices are going to continue to go up, and that's, that's one thing that he made very clear, and there's with the largest food distributor in the United States and throughout, um, one of the largest throughout the world, and I, I really think this plays upon a lot of our values as the town of Elon, one for equity, one for sustainability, and then also for just being good citizens to help those that need this for simple things like, necessary things like getting food, um, getting to work, it's, it's, it's you know, those of us that don't have to rely on it, don't realize what a huge impact it makes on your lives, so. Thank you so much for doing this, I, so I put support. I don't know, we're not doing a vote, or are we doing a voter?
We would need to have you prepare a budget amendment.
Uh, you want to do it right away, yeah.
Is there any use, any way we're using our grant money that we've been getting thus far, worth that? And we basically put it in a, a big fund, but we haven't, we haven't accounted for all of it yet, have we?
We, we have not accounted for all of, um, I heard that. We had, we had planned, we had, we had accounted for all of it, and then we got additional funds through the state, so there's been some rejuggling of some of the priorities, and how we're paying for certain things.
We're talking about thirty-two thousand dollars, that's a lot of money, granted.
Plus.
We received a, a sizable amount of money to try to make our community better.
And still only, you know, twenty percent of a hundred and ninety thousand dollars is only thirty-eight too, so if we wanted to think about adding.
I think later down the road, if we saw ridership oriented it. But I think what he said is that we can buy in on a month-to-month basis, in essence. And with, with little expense, it, it obviously gives us an opportunity to see where it works best. And that's, to me, is better than making a capital investment in something right away without knowing. Um, as we've learned in the past, sometimes our, our, our plans get changed, and I think that's something we should consider.
Yeah.
I think even Quinn's point is that, there's a commonality, we, we create a bus stop that's for Elon Express and Transit. Using the same space for that.
And that Williamson-Haggard route does incorporate a couple of the stops from
Yeah.
universities, the express system. Um, I, I believe the answer to the question about using our, uh, ARPA funds, I, I think is, yeah, I believe it's yes. Debt, we were able to, under the, the final set of rules, classify the, the money we received. They changed the rules, it said, the first ten that you get from us, you can call lost revenue, which allows you to use it more freely than if you're following the, 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 the initial set of rules, which said you could use it here, here, and here. Um, I believe we could do that, um, I certainly want to verify that before you hold me to it, and she's having heart palpitations.
Is that, we have the fund balance to cover thirty-two thousand dollars.
I just would like to add that we've already gotten a survey, and we've gotten some good work done. And I don't want us to kind of run over that and say, let's just do a simplest thing. Let's see if there's some smart moves here that we can do that might, uh, I, I would really like you to take it that next step, and give you permission to take it that next step, and maybe, oh, have some negotiation about some of these routes. Um, you know, going by Slade Park, going by a couple of the places that we showed up on the interview, on the, uh, survey, and then we approve it, and I think that could happen pretty quickly, it sounds like.
We can certainly work with, with Link to, to maximize
Yeah.
stops in Elon, uh, without jeopardizing that blue route.
Yeah.
Because there are limits to how long the routes can go, and when they become economical, when they don't. Um, without triggering the need for that year-long capital expense, waiting for new bus to show up. You know, that's, that's, we can work within the existing budget and, and, you know, our, our, our added cost relatively easy, I think. Going too far beyond that triggers, oh, now we need a new bus, a new route, that's going to take a year. So I think we want.
Yeah, so this could be like a.
Yeah, so this could be like a good first step anyway.
And, and we could look at, are there ways that we can adapt some of the, that Williamson Haggard, those Williamson Haggard stops? Maybe to get out on Manning, uh, to the Mobile Home Park. Maybe to get to Slade Park. I don't know, because that all adds time to the process to, to, to go off route like that.
Before we get off, and I, and I apologize for interrupting you earlier about you were going to mention something Mr. Flood had shared and you were going to share that with us. Would you do that?
Yes.
Cause I think we need to look at those two services, uh, as, as combined to see how we can make we're just ignoring a resource that's been in our backyard for years now. How do we utilize that as well as Link Transit?
So I'm on, I'm in a subcommittee with Mr. Flood for the Elon Community Accessibility Team that with, is partnered with the town and university. So I was able to talk to him about this actually, like we brought it up and then that day I went to the meeting and I said, oh, she about something. And so he emailed me, um, this is what he said. He says, "We have looked for a logical and cost-effective way for our campus bus service to connect with them," meaning Link Transit, "over the past several years. You share some stop locations in Almonds and Almonds Crossing areas at limited times, but that does not really make a viable and useful connection for most of the community. The Elon Express is open to community members to use and we would be happy to participate in any discussions of how to connect campus and/or our bus systems to the town of Elon and Link Transit."
And just to be clear, they are twelve-month in service?
Link?
No, it's press.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I, that would be the only big question.
I don't recall them running in summers.
I don't recall them running.
They usually parked in summer, at best I recall.
There may still be a way to, to do this, but I'm just saying as a listener, make sure that we do is we don't provide something for someone and it goes away.
Well, and it could be even the timing of restructuring some of their stops perhaps, so they're kind of not at the same instant, but within a couple minutes of Link stops. And if that's mainly getting students into Link, come the summer, they don't need to do that. You know, so they could operate independently, but cooperatively, I guess.
Well, I think the best next step is to give you permission to work with Tom and Rich to come back to us. Yeah, and John, with a solid plan and a budget amendment.
Tell me what to do.
Thank you, John. I appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. I'll reach back out with you later, Mary.
Moving on to public comments, this is an opportunity for the public to speak on any non-agenda item for up to three minutes. An agenda item will only be discussed at its appropriate time and public hearing items can only be discussed during the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to share a public comment this evening? Any online?
That was John.
All right, we will close the public comment section. Moving on to public hearing. We have a public hearing on the question of annexation. Diane, is that you?
Uh, yes. So, um, we've done, we've mostly done the, the full process. The public hearing is done because it's required by general statutes, to extend eating zoning in town. Property zones, excuse me. And so, uh, the public hearing tonight is actually just a procedure process. And then on next, at your next regular meeting, you would take action to approve or disapprove the ordinance to extend the town's, uh, city limits for this annexation.
Okay, so we're now open that public hearing. All the public. Any online?
No, there's no one.
All right, we will close the public hearing. Are there any comments or questions? On this item?
I do have one question here. So I take this as a vacant parcel. There's no resident on it at all, right? And water and sewer runs along that property?
Which doesn't it run, run along Manning to reach Wexford or will?
It will. I'm not sure how far out Manning it goes right now. But it will, it will be there as Wexford develops, because Wexford is extending utilities all the way out.
That property is for sale and, uh, Mary Catherine and I have met with potential buyer, um, who talked about tapping into the water and sewer out there, um, which requires petition for annexation.
Any other questions?
And, and we may have to pay for the infrastructure them too, if it wasn't there.
Yeah, but I'm sure.
They want to develop before Wexford.
Yeah.
This property much to the new Park West?
And it is currently zoned. Already, I mean, it's already zoned.
Um, I added a new, um, zoning map to your package. Then you can see the surrounding properties.
In the flood?
Property is not located within a floodplain. Um, but it is located within a stream protection overlay, which I think will also be addressed in our new LMO. The, um, premise behind the stream protection overlay is to protect property within the floodplain or properties that contain riparian and, or excuse me, perennial or intermittent streams. This property contains none of the above, um, from what I could gather in doing my research. Um, there is a ditch on the property that does not have any flowing water. I talked with, um, Almonds County GIS today. I talked with the property owner. It's definitely not in a FEMA floodplain. Um, it doesn't appear to have an intermittent or perennial stream. Um, so I'm not sure about the stream protection overlay. Um, so it, it would be able to be developed with the underlying zoning of NR.
Are these overlays current or we basically operate on overlay that was done in two thousand and five?
It's an overlay that's on our zoning map, so it's one that we have to enforce. Um, however, when you go to that section in the LDO, it talks about uses based on the property being within the floodplain and it's nowhere near a FEMA floodplain.
FEMA's mapping.
And so, yes, it's not there. So again, I think rather than trying to amend it in the next couple of months, this is something we would address as part of the LMO.
They don't plan to develop it prior to then?
They need water and sewer connection, which would require annexation. So yes, they, they recognize there's a process to this.
All right, we'll move that item to our next. We'll now close, did I already close it? I think I already closed it. If not, the public hearing is closed. Moving on to ordinance and resolutions, social district ordinance. I believe there's an update to that.
Evening, everyone. Uh, I sent you a very late email before, so I don't forget to say this, with, um, some artwork that we've gotten from, um, the artists. So I just want, just whenever you get a chance to take a look at that, just as a little sidebar, but I'm here tonight, uh, to make, it's a slight amendment to our ordinance that, um, that was adopted on September twenty-sixth. I think everybody's very happy that got adopted then. And the social district included the dining area sidewalks within that district. The ordinance allows the patrons the ability to walk on the sidewalks with their open container alcoholic beverage and to carry alcohol drink with them in the dining areas. The town approves specifically all beverages and unfortified wine consumption for that district. So our chief of police, Kelly, who's here tonight, if you have any additional questions, she requested with specifically to add some additional language to our order. Because, um, the, the law itself is more open-ended to the types of alcohol you can have. And I know that um, our town council specifically wanted to be around wine and beer. So, um, that's basically the big changes to it. And this language refers to the North Carolina State Code and with the sale of alcohol consumption in the social district. Um, I know that Rich can probably, it was a little bit tricky. Uh, we were talking about the difference between, um, in the district and within the restaurant itself that you're allowed to sell, um, beyond beer and wine, but not to take it out into the social district. So I know Rich worked on some of that language a little bit. But, um, you know, basically, I'm, I'm here tonight, you can ask some questions and, uh, of, of Kelly or myself or Rich. And we're, my request to you is that you would approve these changes to the ordinance, but of course.
Have the change.
Yeah.
Well, that's a problem.
Now to understand what the changes are gonna look like.
Artwork looks wonderful.
I, we need for comments, make sure that you're okay with the changes and that I got.
You're laughing over there. Well, that's great. So the changes basically are that. Well, Kelly, you want to maybe just give a what you were thinking as far as the ordinance, why you wanted more clarification? You don't have the paperwork in front of you.
Yeah, so in a nutshell, when I looked at the ordinance, there wasn't anything that clarified that this was criminal versus civil. S, uh, Senate Bill three hundred is specific that we need certain verbiage to, to distinguish that. Uh, and then just from feedback from the council, there was some, again, for our folks to enforce it, what, what do the cups look like? Some of the general statute that's actually, I just took legislation and tried to make it easy to read, uh, and very brief. So we just updated a few things that gave some more, uh, substantive information, like what the cups need to look like. So when our folks are out there, they actually, they don't have to go back to the ordinance versus the bill. It, it's part of our, our ordinance. So I just thought those would be nice to have the clarification. But primarily that it's a criminal charge, not a civil penalty. And I didn't, I haven't looked, I, I have three hundred and ninety-five unread emails that I haven't got caught up yet, sorry.
Only eight for me.
Well, those were some of the questions that came up in our discussion. Was, you know, how different is it if they're, what is the charge if they walk outside of the district? I think based on that, Kelly, I thought maybe we need to add some more language that you, um, apparently don't have. Sorry about that.
Jill, would you like me to print it really quick? It doesn't appear to be much.
Sure. Well, I think the chief probably needs to review it as well, right?
Yeah.
So we can just put that on the next agenda.
You're not expecting us to vote on, uh, the artwork, are you?
No, 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 no. That is just simply a legitimate expense. So we hired, uh, did in fact the, all the artwork for the rebranding, which was great. He now has his own, his own independent company. And, um, since Emily didn't think my artwork was fantastic, I'm such an artist, those were the same.
So you just want some general feedback?
Feedback. Uh, there's some samples of, you know, I, I think he did three different samples of one particular thing. Now the cups will have individual, um, stickers, um, on each one for the businesses. The windows, there were options there, or, you know, we sell alcohol here, no alcohol, welcome here. Here, um, alcohol is, you know, just, just to differentiate.
Welcome sold here, no drinks.
Right. So, so that way it doesn't put the businesses in an awkward position and
So they're gonna use stickers to go on to a, a cup. And a cup will be what, twelve ounces? That size?
Set it up to sixteen.
Sixteen, yeah. And they, and we, they're gonna be, they'll, they'll put the date on there, when it's sold and the name of the business, and we'll have the logo.
So it's gotta be exclusively in that container.
Yes.
So they took that container and put a big gulp in it, and it's in that cup, and it's got twenty-five ounces or whatever. That's a violation, right?
Yes.
It's gotta be exclusive.
Right?
And, and that's some of the language that I wanted to make sure was in there, so there.
It's a little vague.
Yeah, it, it.
So anyway. Unfortified wine versus fortified?
Alcohol content. So typical wine is eight percent, I think?
Wine is port.
Yes.
Fortified wine is what you buy at your store.
Right, it's port, that's right.
It's up to about sixteen, seventeen percent alcohol.
Okay, Emily, I had to ask for something.
Around five percent.
Lower alcohol.
Okay, and I have another question. So McGurk's sells more than beer and wine. So they will just have to be sure that they're only selling beer and wine?
That they allow that in the social district cup to take outside. They can still sell it in their restaurant and they can have it on the patio, but they can't take it outside off of their.
And that was the, the, the draft language that we were working to amend. Part of that tricky parts, make sure we're not telling the restaurant, oh, sorry, you can't sell liquor anymore. You can still sell liquor, you just can't put it in a cup for someone to leave with.
Only McGurk's does. I didn't know that either.
Now you know.
So.
Where we can go and
Chief, there was a option be, is, is there an option between it being civil and criminal, or is it automatically a criminal?
It's, it's, yeah, I, I think, um, it, this is automatic criminal.
Okay.
And is it because it has to do with ALA laws and, and already subs-
And if it's civil, they don't enforce it.
No, that's why I wanted to.
But the only ones we have it, you know, nine o'clock at night, we can enforce it.
And it's a misdemeanor, but it is a high-level misdemeanor, correct? Or I'm not, I'm not saying that. I, I, I couldn't quote the, the actual, but it's, it's, the general stuff, it's a fifty-dollar fine.
Okay.
You know, no imprisonment, things like that.
Okay. I don't know that we have, I'll ask Randy and Rich an update on where we are with the, with the church.
We're getting closer, but I'm not there yet.
We're, we're getting closer to finding the terms of our dialogue. How's that?
Yeah, the shape of the table.
Our insurance company is in, I'm waiting to hear back how the insurance company chimes in. And then there may be some, um, investment of time and money, wrapping up the problem agreement between the church and the town, the itemize, you know, responsibilities, maybe it's a possibility of liability.
Along with, like I mentioned before, the, uh, the dedication. I'm sure Rich will give you that schedule. At the site. We have the artwork, and it's just sidebar here, but we have the artwork. It is at Public Fork in a giant gigantic. So it's been delivered.
That's at Elon Community Church.
One property, right. Your next meeting. Are there any other questions about the social district? I, I think, uh, to the, any kind of clarity we can provide is good and they click on that QR code, um, they will be able to read all that information. Thank you.
You.
And there's no new business, is that correct? Me, Jen? Wow. Somebody write that down. We're being recorded. No new business. All you, Rick.
Your turn.
I'll be completely, honestly, I forgot to write a report. We had, uh, we had two incidents recently at, at Feshment Park of, uh, folks at the department calling the police about, uh, suspicious person carrying, well, firm of sword. And, uh, it turns out that the gentleman that, who was, who was going to the park is a Sikh, uh, and part of their faith is carrying what they call a kirpon, which is a, a typically, it's a small knife, it could be a large knife. Uh, and he carries a small knife. He was also carrying what effectively would be called a sword. We met with him this afternoon. Chief, I and Jennifer and Kim at the apartment met with him and his wife. And we have worked out an accommodation with him that, that he won't carry the sword when he's coming to the park any longer. He will still carry his kirpon, just attached to a sash. And we're gonna work with him, uh, in various venues to in, in essence, help educate the rest of Elon residents about the Sikh, a little bit about Sikhism. About the Sikh, a little bit about Sikhism and, and why, why, um, men in the Sikh faith carry this kirpan. It is, uh, it has become. It is, it has become an issue of, uh, in the news over the last several months. Student at UNC Charlotte was, uh, ended up in handcuffs from a campus officer. When the student referred, refused to read, to give up his kirpan, which by faith he is required to wear. Federal government has changed its policies regarding federal establishments where, uh, men can now carry their kirpan into federal buildings. We understand the TSA is either change rules or is changing rules, uh, to allow kirpan to be worn. So, i- it is, it. This, this has been happening around the country and around the world, where people have been calling about suspicious people with these weapons. And, and they, they can be seen as a weapon, they can be viewed as weapons. They are, tend to be, they tended to be ceremonial. Going back several hundreds of years where they were actually formally used. Um, but they're traditional and ceremonial now, um, so anyway, I just wanted to, we have, we've met with the gentleman. We have worked out his concerns, we've worked out our concerns about not having weapons in the park. And I think we've come to a mutual agreement and we're gonna continue working with him on various avenues to. To get that, get his, get his, uh, get his point across, I guess is the best way to put it, uh, of why. Why he dresses the way he dresses, why he carries what he carries, so. Confusing period for a couple of weeks, when it first happened and. Nobody was sure what to do, how to do it. And so now we've, we've worked those details out.
It's like you guys have done an amazing job, that was kind of a precarious situation and it sounds like it was handled really well. Does, do they have a child that was playing in the park or were they?
Yeah.
So.
His little daughter.
Yeah, so the child is, you know, gonna be in our school system and this is a great way to educate people about differences that she comes from. Her family's faith comes from, so, um, kudos to y'all doing that, cause, uh, that, that's a tough one. Definitely a tough one.
So what happens if another sheep tries to do that? You go through the same exercise again? We go to educate somebody? If we need to, yeah. And, and, I mean, some of it is, is educating staff. But it's also educating. You know, if, if, if another family moved into the area and started showing up. With a sword, yes, we would do the same thing. The, these are what our rules are, we understand your faith position. Um, we understand that by faith you are required to carry one. We understand you're not required to carry a two-foot one, you can carry a two-inch one. Um, and, and that would be the approach we would try and take with them to, to make sure that we are honoring their faith needs. Without, um, violating local rules, ordinances. I mean, I don't, I, you know, on, on behalf of all of you, all the residents of Elon, I don't wanna be the town who's throwing somebody in jail for. Following their religious faith. It does, it, it's a, it's an incredibly touchy issue, and there are, you know, ten thousand arguments of what if? And we will address them as they come up. Uh, I don't have a, I can't give you a firm rule to say, ah, this is acceptable, this isn't acceptable. It'll, it'll, something's gonna have to be case by case. I know, I knew we were in, in difficult waters when I called our attorney and he said. I don't know what to tell you. Um, use your common sense and. That's what we're trying to do. We're trying to be accommodating to, to all parties. Maintain a safe atmosphere at the park, maintain a respectful, uh, aspect, uh, religious aspect or. Respectful view of a, of a religion as well. Yeah, I, I think it's a difficult situation, I think people have the right to practice their religions as they should do. But it doesn't, uh, doesn't, shouldn't allow them to put other people feel like they're in danger. It'd be no different if someone open carried going out there and saying, my faith says I need to protect myself and carry a weapon. And to me, that's kind of the same thing, is you, you're based on a religious, um. Feeling or belief. And sometimes that gets across as some gray areas. I doubt this person could go to a federal court building with, with his weapon if he were to summon, he could. He could not go in a courtroom. With his kirpan. He could, with the big one, yeah.
No, not the big.
Not the big one.
That's why you made, you guys did a really good job.
The Alice County, I go to the courthouse. That's not a federal courthouse. Yeah, there's, well, there's federal courts all around, but I doubt if he would. But that's not a federal court, federal properties, they are allowed to carry their ceremonial kirpan. And we're not federal, you're not. Uh, school districts are making accommodations all over the country, because. Boys, in, in, in some, it gets into the metaphysical of, of nature of, of any religion, but. The, the kirpan is carried by a male when that male recognizes who he is and what his faith is. Some people will say. That that determination is made when a baby is born and they give it to an infant. Who, who carries it, you know, all the time, so you do have young boys, you do have teenagers who would carry these if they are of the Sikh faith. Yeah, I mean, what concerns me is our, our law enforcement officers are put in a precarious situation. I like the guy has a card that says my religion is this. If they saw someone with a Bowie knife walking around. That would be a concerning, I mean, you would be concerned about what the motive was, and that's, we always have to err on the side of caution, I just.
One of the other, um, the other characteristics of a person in the Sikh religion is that they wear a turban. As well, and they let their hair grow, so that you sometimes will give some semblance of recognition too.
He, he is not in what you would consider street clothes. He wears, we met with him today, bright orange turban, blue robes. Having seen him, I would have said, oh, he's a Sikh. He wasn't. His faith is, is clear. Uh, I won't go into kind of comments. I am, I'm not aware of any, any organized religion that says that, you know, you're. Other types of weapons are required. Um, and Sikhism, it is a, it is a mandate of their faith that they carry kirpan. So. Thank you for hearing me.
I know that was tough for you after talking with you multiple times, so thank you and thanks to the police department for handling it.
With, with great sensitivity.
Friday, we have.
Two to seven. I'm Lucy, I suspect.
No, I'm Sally, thank you. Are you trying to say that I'm a Lucy?
No.
You knew the football.
Oh, yeah. Stephanie?
I don't have anything, thank you.
Um, thanks for the staff, I know I said that I might not miss a meeting, or that my plan was, but.
Say might.
I'm not, I said I was not going to miss a meeting. Um, but I probably will miss, uh, Tuesday the eighth, um, that is election day and I have duties that I'm going to be carrying out on those days. And so I, I will not make that, but talking about voting again, Elon has our first one, it's open, um, it's been having some traffic, the first two days were. Uh, the lowest out of all five in Alamance County, uh, but today has been more active. So, let's continue to push the early voting, um, if you know people and encourage them to come to this site. And I'm gonna try to make Halloween in the park, but. That's it.
Randy?
Um, I just wanted to say, um, kudos to, uh, to Jill. Um, for her work in the downtown area, I think that, uh, I've been driving around with all the corn stalks and all the decorations that really. You kind of have a feeling, because usually by now Christmas stuff is starting to go up, so this is really nice and it's actually, uh, seasonally appropriate. And, uh, it just looks very nice, I just wanted to, to let you know that. I, uh, attended the, uh, the housing, um, forum, um, that United Way put on, on, uh, this last Wednesday. And it was very interesting and I hope to be able to share more, uh, in the coming weeks, uh, about that. Uh, but one of the things, um, that I think will be of great concern is, uh, is how we do address our LMO. And I think we're, there may be some areas that we haven't even looked at yet that we might need to before we, we finish that up, so I just thought we might wanna think about that. And in addition to the great, uh, Halloween event at Beschmidt Park, there is gonna also be a community. Hopeful of a community opportunity for trunk or treat on October thirtieth. At, um, at the Elon Community Church parking lot as well, and that's gonna be from four to six, and, uh, that's my report.
Is that, are you collaborating or is that just the church? Weren't you looking at doing something too, and the PD was looking at doing something at one?
We're doing the Beschmidt.
You're doing Beschmidt, okay.
We have.
There are some local businesses that are gonna have a trunk. Have some things.
Four to six?
Four o'clock to six o'clock.
Um, I wanna thank, uh, our two newest officers, Adrian Schaefer, choosing Elon to be, uh. To be part of our community, we appreciate you and what you're doing, and, um, the staff, all the work that was done, the survey for Mary Catherine. Quite appreciate everything that you're doing and, uh. That's all.
Um, I'm excited for trunk or treats this weekend, and I hope that everyone has a really. Safe trick or treat, it can sometimes get a little interesting on the, um, neighborhood streets, so I just asked that everyone, please park your car. You do not need to drive your car behind your children, please park your car and make it safe for everyone. That is all for me, do I have a motion to adjourn? You all wanna stay?
Thank you.
My motion, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.